Okay, well, good evening, everybody. I am going to call to order this February 4th regular board business meeting. For a call, we have all directors in attendance with the exception of Director Rusko Beach. A time has been set aside on the agenda for citizens' requests of the board due to the coronavirus COVID-19 statewide restrictions and in keeping with the efforts of social distancing. We're conducting this meeting online. If you are a member of the community and wish to provide public comment, please email your comments to saveravery@avery4, A V E R Y four, at gresham.k12.or.us by 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. And your comments will be part of the public record. I want to thank those who did provide comment. And Sarah has been in communication with some of you to gauge your willingness to say those comments directly to us. At the time the agenda, at the time in our agenda forces and requests the board, I'll detail what that will look like. With that, we have a meeting agenda. Is there any action?
I would move. Presented.
Second.
Okay, moved by Director Gomez, second by Director Howard to approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Okay. First on our agendas, our consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are matters considered by the board to be routine. Will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or persons in the audience request specific items be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. In our consent agenda, we have four items. Minutes from our regular work session from January 7th. Minutes from the regular business meeting on January 7th, a financial report as of December 31st, 2020, and a personnel report with employee contracts.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I'm sorry, where did the second come from?
Carla.
From Carla.
Oh, okay. So it's been moved by Director Howard, second by Director Palusa to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? I. Any opposed? Okay.
I just want to say I'm having internet issues and so, but I've approved that. Yes, for both. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I appreciate that clarification. I will, I will call a little bit more delayed and yeah, I, thanks for the notice, Robyn. Okay. First up in our agenda, we have recognitions. And our first recognition is for Classified School Employees Week Resolution. And this has Athena Vadas' name on it, Athena.
Thank you, Chair Peterson. March 1st through the 5th, 2021 has been designated as Classified School Employees Week. And it is appropriate that the board officially acknowledge the importance of a strong local school system and the contribution that classified employees make to that system. A resolution of acknowledgement for that purpose has been prepared for the board's adoption.
Director Howard, would you consider reading the resolution?
Certainly. Resolution declaring March 1st, 2021 Classified School Employees Week. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world. And whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system. And whereas classified employees work directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners, and community members. And whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property, and the safe transportation, healthy nutrition, and the instruction of students. And whereas our community depends on and trusts classified employees to serve students. And whereas classified employees with their diverse talents and true dedication nurture students throughout their school years. Now therefore, we, the members of the Board of Directors for the Gresham Barlow School District do hereby proclaim March 1st through 5th, 2021 to be Classified School Employees Week. We urge administrators, teachers, parents, students, and others from our community to join us and recognizing the dedication and hard work of these individuals. Dated this 4th day of February 2021.
Okay, so that's the text of the resolution. There's a recommended action.
I would move to ratify the resolution recognizing March 1st through 5th, 2021 as Classified School Employee Week in the Gresham Barlow School District.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved by Director Howard, second by Director O'Connell. Ratify the resolution recognizing March 1st through 5th, 2021 as Classified School Employees Week in the Gresham Barlow School District. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Okay.
Um, Director Peterson, I do want to extend that gratitude to our classified staff because I have witnessed this, this term, this year, since the spring, actually, their hard work and dedication to our community. I've seen them out in the rain, in the cold, waiting for our families, greeting our kids as they pick up their meals, as they pick up their supplies. And they're always greeting the kids with a smile, so I just want to thank them for that.
So thanks, Director Gomez. And thanks for bringing that forward to us, Athena. Next in our recognition is Sam Barlow High School National Federation of High School Sports Regional Coach of the Year. And this has Mr. Cook's name on it. John. John, you're muted.
Thank you again, Chair. I've said that twice now for two different reasons. Tonight, the board is asked to recognize Andrew Pate, the boys tennis coach at Sam Barlow High School. The National Federation of High School Sports NFHS has selected Andrew Pate as the 2019-20 Northwest Section Boys Tennis Coach of the Year. The Northwest Section includes Alaska, Idaho, Montana, Oregon, Washington, and Wyoming. Honorees were selected based upon their performance in the 2019-20 school year, lifetime community involvement, school involvement, and philosophy of coaching. Tonight, the district recognizes Sam Barlow High School Coach Andrew Pate for his coaching skills, dedication, and support of our Sam Barlow tennis athletes. Congratulations.
I believe, yeah, I see, I see Mr. Pate in attendance. So I'm, I hate putting people on the spot. I think we've already done this once to Mr. Pate, if I'm not mistaken. We've already recognized him for another award, which is indication of how respected he is. I could say that personally as well. So Mr. Pate, I don't know, Sarah, if we're able to promote to put Mr. Pate brutally on the spot and if, okay, Sarah's gonna try to promote you. There is no pressure to turn on your video if, but we're grateful that you're joining us.
Uh, board, I'd just like to thank you all for the work you do and yeah, it seems kind of silly to get recognized for going from state to the regional winner of that. I kind of laughed when they made me fill out the criteria because they said, it started with how many state titles have you won? And I'm thinking, I'm in a state with Jesuit who wins the boys tennis title every single year, like 19 out of the last 20 years, so I have zero state titles. We've done really well in our conference and taken a lot of young men that have gone and qualified for the state tournament, but the only reason I could think of that I might have won is just honestly, I do not get kind of the stereotypical country club tennis player who has been raised on tons of lessons or anything. The typical player I've worked with who's been successful shows up, has played some sports, and probably has never held a tennis racket, kind of catches the fever, loves it, and then ends up working really hard. And so really, this is a credit to, I think, to the Barlow coaching community. We have a lot of tireless, hardworking, varsity coaches, assistant coaches, volunteers who make this, make Barlow a successful school for sports and really for all activities, dance and theater and music. But yeah, I just want to thank you and I appreciate the recognition. And it's a credit to my players and the volunteer assistants I've had.
Well, thanks for joining us, Andrew, and we're so grateful you're in our district and serving our students and making the young men that get to play for you better. So I have a personal story about Mr. Pate. But I don't, I hesitate to tell it. Mr. Pate was brand new in the district, so I'm gonna aid you for a second, but then take it right back. It's brand new in the district when I had started at Barlow, a brand new coach. I did not play tennis for Mr. Pate. I did, I tried to play some basketball for Mr. Pate and I didn't do that either. But Mr. Pate was one of, I had a serious health emergency affect my family when I was a freshman in high school, a life-changing medical event. And Mr. Pate, having known previous siblings and I was not in class of his, both he and Mr. Johnson, whom we've recognized on this board, were two men who came beside me and my family to kind of help a 14-year-old version of me know that it would be okay. And I just know how you pour yourself not only into athletics, but I know how you pour yourself into your classroom as well. And so I can say that personally, how grateful I am to have you. And not only you, but we also get your wonderful wife, serving our kids as well in the district, so. Thank you again for joining us, Andrew, and congratulations on a well-earned reward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next up is Sam Barlow High School Mount Hood Conference Drama Champions. Mr. Cook, please introduce us here.
Thank you again, Chair. In an effort to recognize students who achieve champion status in school activities and academic programs, tonight, the district and board have the opportunity to recognize student champions from the Mount Hood Conference Acting Festival. On Saturday, January 23rd, Sam Barlow High School had five student performers share fantastic performances at the virtual Mount Hood Conference Acting Festival. This virtual competition is similar to a conference playoff where performers can participate in several categories and earn a rank by medal and percentage based on their performance, which also qualifies them for state-level competition. Juniors Abigail Beskey, Maren Miller for duo acting, and sophomore Mia Williams solo acting scored in the top 10% and received a superior ribbon. Juniors Toby Niehorn and Andrew Schroder received the showcase medal, the top score of the day in duo acting, and had their video performance streamed at the awards ceremony. In the audience tonight, as attendees are Maren, Mia, Toby, and Andrew, but I did not see Abigail, and I may have missed that. If I did, Abigail, I'm sorry.
Again, a very unfair spot to put anybody in, but if there's a representative from Barlow to
Mr. Schmidt is here this evening. We can put him on the spot.
Is Mr. Schroder in the house? Hold on a second. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, cool. Is Mr. Schroder in the house?
Jeff is here, Bruce.
Cool, I just, anyways, I mean, I'd love to put him on the spot, but if you have me here, I just want to highlight a couple of things. One is the theater, theater program district and conference-wise is one of the only activities that we have performing a full season. So they've been able to do that virtually and have some great success engaging students. Obviously, Jeff Schroder, our drama teacher at Barlow, fantastic addition, and I want him to be able to speak for the kids. But from a principal perspective, phenomenal part of our staff extends a huge amount of opportunity to students, does a fantastic job directing them, coaching them up. But most importantly, he does a great job developing young men and young women at our school to become quality individuals once they leave Sam Barlow High School. That's something that I highly respect in the work that he does and appreciate the performances because they are amazing. I'm not necessarily a performing arts guy myself. Don't ask me to sing or dance or anything like that, but I've been to, I don't know, countless performances and I am always thoroughly impressed and entertained. And Jeff can explain a lot more about the competition and I think he should have an opportunity to do that.
Absolutely. Thanks, thanks, Bruce, for introducing.
You bet, you bet.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Awesome. I'm sorry, I'm in my car right now. But yes, I'm super, super honored to, the students are with us tonight. And they, they worked really hard. I only had like, I think, eight students participate this year. You know, usually it's in the, you know, upper 60s, 70s, you know, but with, with the, you know, pandemic, it's been, it's been really difficult and I just, these kids, the kids that did it, I'm just so proud of them. They had to work on their own outside of class on these pieces and they had they had to record themselves, you know, from, from head to toe and work together on Google meets to make it happen. And they, you know, they recorded themselves, they submitted the videos. They were judged by judges online. You know, it's a totally different kind of acting because you got cameras that you're working with and everything, and so I'm just so proud of them for the perseverance that they have to, to get their pieces in and to work so hard during this time. I'm just, it's, I'm inspired by them every day. Thank you.
I do want to plug that, that, that Mr. Schroder is also coordinating a musical for the spring. We have multiple contingencies in place based on what we can do. They're doing the Addams Family, which has been adjusted, the script has been adjusted for a pandemic situation. Face masks are part of their costuming. He's just consistently found ways to engage kids, make it happen. We did an awesome, he did an awesome like trap in the fall, which was a super cool production. They did live broadcast of Miracle on 34th Street. Is that right?
It's a Wonderful Life.
It's a Wonderful Life. Super cool. So he's doing great things and keeping kids involved.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for joining us and your incredibly hard work to engage students, but especially congratulations to the students who put in the work and are getting just recognized for 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 setting the example for your community. You make us look good, so we're very grateful that you join us and and families, if you're in attendance, we're incredibly proud of your kids too. We're gonna move forward into our foundation reports. The Gresham Barlow Education Foundation identified some dates on our 2021 calendar to report to the school board and February 4th is one of them. We last talked to them back in November. Except, I believe we talked to them last month to to bid farewell to Vicki Mon. So I'm checking if we have anybody in attendance from the Education Foundation to present.
Peterson, it looked, I did get him from Bell saying that didn't have any for this year.
Okay. Okay. And we'll move forward. Now we'll move on to our superintendent district leadership team reports. Dr. Pereira.
Yes, thank you, Chair Peterson. I do have a couple of things and I will yield some of my time to Mr. Hugh to give an update on the vaccines. But part of my report, again, also wanted to recognize our classified staff who I also believe are the backbone of our district. They help with a lot, support in a lot of different areas and definitely were right there when we needed to help with students with feeding, with get, you know, preparing meals, delivering those meals, device distribution, tech support. Even the safety and health protocols that we've been implementing all along have been really supported by our classified staff. But another group of our employees that we also, we're recognizing actually this week is our National School Counselors and Social Workers Appreciation Week. And as a school district, you know, we so appreciate unique and collaboration contributions that both our school counselors and our social workers make on a daily basis, even in a pandemic, even in virtually. The counselors and social workers help our students realize not only their potential, but they help them promote healthy living, positive actions, and find new paths for students to achieve future goals. And for all those reasons, I would ask the board and everyone watching in our community to help me honor and recognize and show our appreciation for our school counselors and our social workers for all that they do on behalf of our students and families. So if we could take a moment just to thank them and appreciation. Certainly, Carla, Carla, Carla Gay and her team have led a charge this past week, or all week actually, to recognize our counselors, and we've been delivering recognition to them throughout the week as well. But thirdly, I highlighted in our in our work session about our district receiving a recognition from Oregon's Association of Latino Administrators, and I wanted to share that award with the, with the community. It's bull, and again, it's for the for exhibiting leadership in areas of equity and cultural competence. And so I wanted to make sure that the community was aware of the recognition our district received. And as I've shared over and over again, it bears my name, but it definitely recognizes the work, the leadership of Karina Prasey and several different staff members that we have that really do help lead that charge. And then lastly, but certainly just as important as well, I'm gonna turn over, yield some of my time to James Hugh, who's deputy soup to give you an update on vaccines. And I just want to remind the board and the community, we offer those access for our staff, but we cannot and will not ask who has and who hasn't taken the vaccine. So I know we've offered at least two waves at this point, and James, you want to give an update from there?
Introduce Dr. Pereira. So the Tri-County vaccination update as of Tuesday, there were 40,000 public K-12 educators, 4,500 private school K-12 educators, and 21,000 early learning providers that are in this four different waves. And to date, we've vaccinated approximately 12,000 educators and have 15,000 more scheduled and another 5,600 appointments available. So between all of those vaccinations that's already taken place and those that are scheduled and those that are in the process of being scheduled, approximately 41% of the total educators in the tri-county areas have been vaccinated. As you know, we have four waves. In that first wave, it was all of our essential employees, which operational folks from bus drivers to custodians, facility folks, food service workers, all of our limited in-person staff, as well as some of our building leaders in those schools. And K through, pre-K through one in that first wave. That happened January 27th to February 2nd. About 11,232 appointments were filled at that point in time. And then between February 3rd and February 9th, Wave 2 appointments will be fulfilled with about 14,600 vaccines, vaccines being done at that point in time. Today, we communicated to Wave 3 staff, which is our middle school staff, grade 6 through 8. And unfortunately, there were a little bit of a hiccup. There were only about 800 slots available for the region because some of you may have heard recently that some of the vaccines are now going to some of the incarcerated. So we will have to kind of wait for a couple of days before we may have an opportunity to send out communication to staff about Wave 3 again. And then, of course, Wave 4 is our largest group, which is our high school staff as well as our community partners, our and our district office staff. And that's about 17,000 folks. This is kind of some of the things that we have heard from staff that have been willing to share and what we've heard from the Multnomah Educational Service District. Wait times are, you know, approximately about an hour. Sometimes it's a little more, sometimes it's a little less. Wait times. You know, Wave 4 again may be challenging because there is also a little bit of a dip in vaccine availability and supply. But what we're hearing from the Oregon Health Authority that within the next two weeks, that supply should increase again. So we're cautiously optimistic that our staff who, you know, want to get the vaccine have the opportunity to get the vaccine during that time.
And that concludes my report. Chair Peterson, I think next we have the return to learn update, and I'm not sure if Lisa has some items to add to that, but John Cook definitely will be presenting that whenever you're ready.
Could I ask a follow-up question to Mr. Hugh? Was there any report on how soon the second dose is being scheduled?
Yes, when the staff go for their first dose, their second dose have been scheduled that point in time. And what we've heard through the MESD, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 17 to 21 days. So if they went today to get the vaccine, they would have gotten the second dose scheduled between 17 and 21 days from when they got the first dose.
So the first.
Right now, there, there have both the Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna vaccine is the ones that are being utilized.
So Mr. Hugh, by February 22nd, we would have several staff members vaccinated with their second dose.
That would, that would be correct.
So they'd be ready to return to work that week.
Correct.
Okay.
The one piece of information that I didn't share, Athena Vadas had shared out to employees today that the MESD is holding an East County employee COVID-19 vaccine information. That's going to be a Zoom meeting. So any staff that want to know more about the, the COVID-19 vaccine, there's a forum that takes place on Tuesday, February 9th at 5:30 PM. And so I believe Ms. Athena had sent out the invite to all staff sometime today. And I can make sure that Sarah Avery has that to share with the board if somebody would like to participate.
It has been sent out to the board, Mr. Hugh.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Pereira, yeah, I think we're rolling right into the return to learn update with I'll let you introduce who's gonna, who's gonna provide it.
It'll be Mr. Cook and/or Lisa Riggs.
Chair, unless Lisa wants to give this, my name's on there. I can broadcast my screen. It's pretty straightforward here.
Yeah, please. Yes.
Alrighty. Give me a second here. Where is? Oh, it's not giving me. It is not giving me titles here of my documents to broadcast, so. Sarah, are you able to broadcast this?
Really? One second.
Thank you. Chair and directors, it's a very similar presentation to the past. You'll notice when we get to, as Sarah's bringing this up on slide two, our graphic on the website is a bit different this month because of the change from January 19th. And. And. There we go. And you go on to slide two, Sarah.
Are you wanting this after this one?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We're good to go. You'll see a lot more green this month and areas of metrics that are advisory now that we have met. And you'll see that the trending is down, although over the past several days, it's really been flat. So I anticipate next week's update to be rather flat similar to this week. If we are going, we're going by the metrics, we would be able to start or we are able to start planning elementary onsite and hybrid transition. And onsite and hybrid instruction as well. Onsite instruction full, not quite yet. And elementary onsite and hybrid instruction when it comes to case rate as well. And remember, on the left hand side is case rate. On the right hand side is positivity rate. And we want to be in the yellow or green zone. Questions for me on this slide?
Yes, I do. Could you just remind me? Let's say we don't below two hundred, we're in a hybrid model. But then case rates spiked over two hundred. What what's the response that we're supposed to take at that point?
You know, if it spikes over, it's not an immediate knee jerk reaction that we are closing or doing anything. We're going to hold steady with what we're doing. Watch those metrics and see what the trend will be and then coordinate with local health agencies on what might we do next. But it'll be a prudent decision making process and that's in the RSSL guidance. So if you want, unless anybody has any more questions on this slide, we can advance to the next one.
John, on that slide, does that include both Multnomah County? And Clackamas Counties out what?
Yes, it does.
Really small on my screen. So it's at the blue, blue line and the red line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And because in Clackamas, I believe is the blue and Multnomah County is red. Here's the new table that guides our decision making process. We are pretty firmly in this third column over from, or excuse me, fourth column over from the left. And keep in mind, we're looking at the top row, not the second row. The second rows for smaller counties. And then we are looking at the third row also with some descriptors at the bottom. Currently, if you want precise numbers of what the graph you saw before, then Multnomah County were experiencing two hundred and six point nine cases per hundred thousand. And that's updated every Monday evening or Tuesday morning. Clackamas is two hundred and four per hundred thousand and the positivity rates are dropping. There are also on other websites as you look, when you look at infection rates, which are also key. The infection rates up until recently were trending down pretty drastically as well. Past four or five days, they started to trend up again. If you listen to the OHU, OHSU predictive analysts who tend to be, they've been pretty accurate for about six, seven months. They are predicting a mid February bump that could be related to the new variants. Coming in.
That that bump is in case rate positivity rate or?
Combination of both. And really what he did, he, the, the guy who gave the presentation attributed it to behavior more as as much as. The new variant could be in Oregon, it seems that we're on an eight week cycle of people do exactly what they're supposed to do. Case rates drop, positivity drops, and then they kind of get tired. It's intervention, tiredness, fatigue. And masks and other things stop happening. Then they see that the disease starts to rise again and Oregonians go back to doing before. So it's as much behavior rate, it much behavior connected as it is disease connected.
Board, any questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
So Mr. Cook, kind of along that line of what you just said about the sort of rolling and the things that happen. If we start moving into the hybrid and returning kids to school, is there also? A simultaneous where other community things start opening up? I think that's what I've read about in some other countries and states where they start opening the schools and people feel back to normal. So. Restaurants start opening, which. I'd like to eat in a restaurant, but I'm not quite ready to yet, but restaurants open, places open, and then we start seeing our case rates go up. And it affects the potential student population. So are we in sync with that? Do we get to get a head start with it? And kind of let them come in a little bit later? Is there a conversation about that?
We are pretty in sync with it. There's an Oregon Health Authority document. It's called Sess Sector Risk Categories. That uses the same color columns, the same things and what happens in each column. So you can see, I've been looking at it today. Or or Multnomah County right now is high risk. Which is the same color as elementary onsite and hybrid transition. And within that, they have guidelines for opening up slightly eating and drinking establishments, indoor recreation. Retail stores, there's all, all of it changes at the same time.
Or any other questions? I have a. A lob that I understand if if nobody has an answer to, but Clark County schools have started to open up. Across the river. Is there any anecdotal or otherwise conversation, any, any comparative about case rates? Anything that we have confidence talking about?
I haven't looked over the river for a bit, chair. So no, not from my end.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, our, our community has borne a great sacrifice to get our case rates down. I, I hope we continue to bear that sacrifice because. We'd like to be in that yellow column firmly. I give us options for kids. Okay. Board, I'm not hearing any other questions. Okay. I'm inclined to power through. Is there objection to powering through? Looking to my colleagues on the board. Okay, my hope is that we are able to open the floor to a couple of the. Folks who wanted to provide comment who are on tight timelines to the kids' bedtimes, an area that I very much respect. So. We're going to pass through this recess and we have some committee meeting minutes and reports. These are information items. Unless a board member wants to discuss these, I'm going to move through them. Hearing no comment, I'm going to move through. Now we set aside time for association reports. We start with the Gresham Barlow Education Association. Rhett Hyman, are you in the building? I'm not, I'm not seeing Rhett. So we'll move on to the OSEA, Oregon School Employees Association, Tia Ross. Hi, Tia, thanks for joining us.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Chair Peterson, fellow members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Perera. Since this week is Counselor and. Social Worker Appreciation Week, we would like to say thank you to all of the support and resources that have been provided. And are continuing to continuing to be provided to our students and families, especially during this crazy year we're having. We would also like to say thank you to the board for recognizing classified staff members in March. And that is all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tia. Okay, we're going to move on to citizens' requests of the board. So we received twenty comments, which time will not allow us to. To actually read into record all of these comments. However, Sarah Avery, as you provided those comments or after. Hopefully reached out to you. I know I saw a number of them, so I have every confidence that she did, but. Reached out to you to ask if you're willing to speak and we received eight individuals who were willing. Six of those are on a common, out of a common issue. And so I will probably narrow that pool a little bit, but the first person that I would like. To see if they're willing and still able to speak is Jordan Berta. On the content of concerns over limited in person instruction and in person learning. So. Jordan, if you would mind raising your hand so that Sarah can see you quickly or she already promoted you. And then if you can introduce yourself and your association with the district and then try to limit your comments to about three minutes. But we're grateful that you. Engaged, so.
Hi, thanks for getting me in. I am trying to put my little one to bed. So. My name's Jordan Berta and I am a special education teacher at Clear Creek Middle School. So I just want to start to say thank you for your time and. I'm writing to you to share the perspectives of my families and many staff members. As a special education case manager, I have strong relationships with my families. Right now, my families are struggling. Many have lost their jobs and are struggling to put food on the table. Many are sick with COVID nineteen or have lost a family member. And yes, they are struggling with distance learning. These are the voices that I don't hear represented at board meetings. These are the people who are very nervous to return to in person with the metrics where they are. They are dealing with so many other things right now, so they aren't able to share their stories with you all. They are also nervous to share their struggles and don't feel comfortable telling people that they don't have relationships with. These families are also predominantly families of color. While I don't speak for all staff, the staff members I have spoken to about starting the limited in person instruction have major concerns. We are hopeful for a return with the vaccines rolling out, but people don't know when they will be vaccinated and don't feel comfortable coming back until they have had both doses. Another concern is the new variants that have arrived in our area. They have proven to be more contagious and dangerous, so staff are rightfully scared. The union has data from staff on their willingness to return, and I do believe it has changed since the variants have arrived and our state metrics were lowered. Our special education staff questions student, how students will be supported in limited in person instruction. When they are already teaching comprehensive distance learning. Our LE one and LE two students attend general education classes, so they actually don't have the flexibility that people seem to think that they have. This is essentially creating another program and not providing the staff for it. I know the subpool was mentioned, but historically our subpool has been very limited. During pre pandemic years, it was difficult to find substitutes, so I'm wondering where the district thinks that these subs will come from now. Using our classified staff is another idea, but they can only cover so many kids. Our classified staff doesn't have the training to monitor high numbers of our most high need students. Right now, the benefit doesn't seem to outweigh the risk. On a personal note, I worry about what I will bring home to my partner and my five year old daughter. I know kids are said to not become as sick, but there are so many unknowns and I don't want to learn about it the hard way. My household is nervous, but yet hopeful that the district will make a safe choice. I want to return to support my students more than ever, but I need it to be as safe as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for providing comments. So I failed to mention that. In an in person environment, what would happen is folks would read their comment or speak to the board and then we really don't engage back. And it can be a kind of an awkward transition. And so. That's going to to happen for all of our speakers tonight, but I appreciate you taking the time to join us and wish you all the best. You put your young one down.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
The next. Person I'm going to ask for Gracie Heath, who's a middle schooler in the district. Gracie, if you're available, please raise your hand so that. Sarah Avery can see you and promote. And while you're being promoted, I saw a chat. Which. From Josia, who also will be speaking here soon. The reason is because the board speaks as one voice. And. Comments that are not part of the agenda, which is typically what public citizens' requests of the board are related to items that are not on agenda. Means the board's not. Hasn't entered the conversation prepared to to engage and dialogue. And so. That is the reason and why the board has taken this practice, which is a very standard practice across our state. Gracie is joining with. Another commenter, her mother, Rayanne. And so Gracie, if you would speak first and introduce yourself and your relationship to the district. And then Rayanne, after Gracie's completed, if you wouldn't mind providing your statement, also introducing yourself and your relationship to the district.
Okay, hi, I'm Gracie Heath. I'm an eighth grader and I go to West Orient Middle School. So I know that you guys have gotten a lot of planes complaints about sending kids back to school from parents, but this time I'm going to give you my point of view as a student. As a student, do I like online school? No. Do I want to go back to school? Of course. But do I think that I'm going to be able to spend my last year as a middle schooler back at school? No. Why? Because of the way you're seeing the situation. Why when teachers don't want to do something that the board decides, do they get to let their voices be heard? But when it comes to students, you won't let us have any impact when it's concerning our learning. Why can't we go back to putting the well being of students and their development first? My anxiety has worsened since online school started this year. I think it's awful that you're even considering not sending us back. Do you think we like online school? Can you explain to me when you guys had to go through this and be isolated from your loved ones and friends at our age? You guys wouldn't have even had a plan if you had to go back to school from home. And if it was back when you guys were younger, you guys would have been sent back ages ago. So humor me and give me a reasonable response of why we should go back to school. Sincerely, a frustrated middle schooler.
Thank you, Gracie. And as, as with before, we don't respond, even though yours was a very direct question. But we're grateful that you took the time to join us and are glad you're a student in our district. Rayanne, are you, are you also there?
Yes, I am. My name is Rayanne Heath and I'm a parent of three daughters who attend East Orient Elementary and West Orient Middle School. I've been blessed with highly intelligent and driven children. They're exceeding expectations per the report cards. They're thriving academically on paper for the sorry excuse of an educational experience, but let me tell you, they're not thriving. They don't like school. They've cried countless times. They're bored out of their minds, but they're getting good grades. There is no challenge for them. And I want to know, is this success in your eyes? I've stood back and I've watched the destruction of our children through this thing that we've called distance learning. Our children need school, they need sports and social gatherings to help them develop, learn and enjoy their lives. I appreciate all the teachers are doing. Believe me, the staff at East and West Orient are the best. They are hard workers and have done the best they can with this impossible, impossible situation. I'm a pediatric nurse. I've worked in one of our local children's hospitals for over eighteen years. I've traveled to Haiti on multiple, multiple medical missions and I've treated the poor and provided medical care to those that rarely receive any. I've seen a lot in my career. This year has been one like no other I've ever experienced. It's been hard. It's been exhausting. It's been emotional and extremely scary. The one thing I have is I've worked through it all. People needed help and I never had the option to work from home. Day after day, I've gone to work and I've served the community. I've heard the sorry excuse, you're a nurse, you signed up for that. I did take an oath to serve and protect, but so have teachers. They took an oath to teach our children, to protect our children and to prepare our children to excel in the real world, even when it is scary. If I had said I didn't want to work on the front lines, I would have been fired. I don't understand how teachers can say that they don't want to go back or that it is unsafe. I just got my vaccine and I am so thankful to science and the progress they are making towards defeating this virus. But I worked eleven plus months without protection of a vaccine. I've done everything in my power despite my exposure every shift to keep my family safe. How many other essential workers have continued to serve and protect our community? Grocery clerks, police officers, Costco employees, Home Depot employees, vets, pilots, flight attendants and medical clinics all have remained open. They have all continued to serve. You can go to any store and get anything you need, but my daughters cannot receive a good education because they're stuck in front of a screen. Bored out of their minds because district leadership. bored out of their minds because district leadership and teachers' unions are scared. We demand better. While I have your attention, let's talk mental health. I work on an acute pediatric medical surgical unit that has been overwhelmed with an influx of mental health patients raging in the ages of eight to 17 years. These patients enclose those that have attempted to kill themselves, patients that are thinking of killing themselves, patients that are depressed and dealing with anxiety. We're seeing, I hate to use this overused word, but unprecedented numbers of patients with mental health issues. Suicidal ideation and suicide attempts are at an all-time high. We are seeing patients with eating disorders more than I've ever seen in my career. They have no control over their lives and they're spiraling out of control. There are not enough facilities in Oregon to handle the level of patients struggling with mental health issues. So they are on my floor in the hospital waiting for a bed in a psych facility if one ever does become available. One of my own daughters, who has never struggled with anxiety or depression, is now struggling. We have to consider the overall health and well-being of our children. They are not worth sacrificing in all of this. We can do.
Thank you, Rayanne. I think the very, very end of your comment, if it matched your letter that was provided in the record, we might have just missed that very end, but wanted to thank you too for joining us and your willingness to speak. I'd like to invite Kelly Rasmussen to speak. Kelly, if you could raise your hand so that, thank you. All right, Kelly, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, your relationship to the district and then try to keep her on three minutes. Thank you.
I am a parent in the district. I have an elementary schooler, middle schooler, and two high schoolers. So we're experiencing all the grade levels, all the school levels of comprehensive distance learning. And the reason I wrote to you today was about your decision that you made last week to keep all GBSD students in comprehensive distance learning. Your decision has left all of the students and families facing an indefinite closure. And you have based reopening on a requirement being teacher vaccines that we cannot measure, we cannot track, and we have no way of knowing when we've reached that milestone. So we're left floundering with no commitment and no dates for a return. And the reason that this is important to me is because I have watched my children change from passionate, engaged, excited students to kids that feel indifferent, disconnected, and unmotivated. If you looked at their grades, you would say that CDL is a great success, but what you can't see is how they have lost their love of learning and their love of going to school. A Barlow High School freshman spoke yesterday on KPTV and kind of jokingly talked about how he can do his classes and watch YouTube at the same time and still get good grades. And he was not exaggerating. That is the case. I think that's just the nature of comprehensive distance learning. And this has been the case for nearly a year for our kids, and it's time to offer them something more. Both the CDC and Governor Brown, I'm sure you're very familiar, have come out to say that it is relatively safe to start returning to school even without vaccines. And the board and the district has been following the CDC and Governor Brown's guidance up to this point. So I would just like to see you continue to follow that. We saw the metrics earlier that do support us doing more than eventually someday phasing in limited in-person. So I just asked that now that the teachers have been well looked out for, that you please look out for the students who are struggling. Even the kids with the most ideal supports at home are not being served well by comprehensive distance learning. And I would just like you to reconsider your decision of the indefinite closure and move toward beginning the reopening process. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly, for joining us. Jake Freshour, if you're available. And again, please just introduce yourself, your relationship to the district, and try to keep comments to about three minutes.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hey, Jake Freshour. I have three daughters who attend Hogan Cedars Elementary. That's who I am. I don't need to reintroduce myself. I'm going to go ahead and read my letter. After watching our kids in first and second grade suffer in silence for almost a year now, I have some questions as to why you are still kicking the can down the road on returning to in-person learning, especially when the majority of GBSD parents, roughly 50 to 60%, have indicated they would prefer this option over CDL. I don't feel like our children have a voice, and they are suffering in numerous ways because of it. My children have gone from absolutely loving every aspect of school and learning to verbalizing that they hate school on a weekly basis. Frankly, I don't blame them. Let me be clear and very clear that we are extremely appreciative of specifically how the Hogan Cedars teachers and staff initially reacted to this dynamic situation with limited data or scientific knowledge to make the best decision on how to proceed. However, we now have countless data points and studies from the medical, scientific, and school communities who have returned successfully to make a truly informed decision based on facts instead of emotions. I feel that our community of students and parents deserve an answer to these questions from the GBSD and GBSD Board and the reconsideration of beginning school with lippy hybrid, et cetera, without delaying any longer for vaccinations. These are the questions I have. What reasoning, science, data, facts, or medical studies is behind your decision to continue delay the beginning of in-person learning plan despite meeting the now advisory metrics from the state? Second question, why do you feel it's necessary for all teachers to be vaccinated despite guidance from the state? The CDC, even as of yesterday, who even strongly suggested that kids can back safely without the vaccination, much like they did back on November 19th. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Academies of Science and Engineering and Medicine, et cetera, which recommend returning to in-person learning with multiple layers of protection or protocols, a vaccine being one of these layers. Third question, what data or information on the emotional, mental, social wellness and safety of our elementary, middle, and high school students can you provide that supports your decision to continue a CDL? Fourth question, given the fact that failure rates in GBSD are nearly double from last year, does the final layer of teacher protection via vaccinations and associated waiting periods after the second vaccine dose outweigh many students not graduating or being held back a grade? Lastly, how do you rationalize your decision to continue CDL and delay starting in-person learning despite the fact that the overwhelming majority of American workers, healthcare, grocery, retail, transportation, public servants, et cetera, have continued to operate with similar protocols or layers of risk mitigation? If you don't plan to adjust course and make decisions based on logic, then I have an emotional question for you based on similar reasoning from watching the last GBSD special work session. Excuse me, when a board member stated, what's one more month of waiting for the vaccine? Well, I have an answer. One more month can mean the difference between additional kids failing, having increased suicidal ideations, or diving deeper into anxiety than many kids are already experiencing. Thus, the reason emotional arguments are not effective for this type of decision. They can be played both ways. One month is an absolutely big deal, depending on which lens you view it through. I plead for you to thoughtfully apply reason and facts moving forward instead of acting on emotions and reconsider opening schools once training and updated protocols can be implemented and simply not waiting for vaccinations, which will likely take months for all teachers in reality. I appreciate your time and look forward to your response. Thanks.
Jake, thanks for joining us and for your engagement. I'm going to move forward, so I'm going to do what I swore I wouldn't do, and we received out of the 20 letters for public comment that we received, the vast majority were related to this topic of either limited in-person instruction or return to full-time school or hybrid school or some derivative. I'm going to move through some of those other comments, and I appreciate people's willingness to vocalize them. Those letters for everybody are provided in the public record. If folks are interested, you can access it on the Gresham Barlow website, which is gresham.k12.or.us. Look at board information, and then you'll see a board docs icon. A board docs is B-O-A-R-D, D-O-C-S. It's got a tree on it. If you click on that, you can identify our meeting February 4th, and under agenda item J1, those comments are provided. We have one more person who's here to speak from Youth Oregon to talk on a different topic about issues within the school district, and we have a representative from that group, Josia Mosley. If you're available, Josia, if you could raise your hand and we'll get you. And again, please introduce yourself, your relationship to the district, and try to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Hi, so my name is pronounced Jaia, like Asia with a J. You're fine. I'm representing Youth Oregon. The other founder couldn't make it today, but I'm just going to read what I submitted. And I'm a prior student, by the way. So our names are Jaia Mosley and Chelsea Cortez, founders of Youth Oregon. However, the board may have some familiarity with us because of the emails we have been sending you all, or our organization has been inquiring to discuss issues within the school district for months and have yet to receive responses from all of the members, which is why we are reaching out today with this public comment. As students, both of us face harassment, racism, xenophobia, racial profiling, and mistreatment from staff, students, and families in the district. Our lived experiences as students in this district have proven us, proven to us that there's a lot of work to do on the basis of racial inequity, mental health resources, representation, and acknowledgement of BIPOC communities, as well as truly centering the voices of vulnerable populations. We had sent out emails to the board last September about some issues we had faced or heard from other students that were occurring in the district. At that time, we received three emails back from members of the board. Just three members regarding our email. The rest was ignored. So the second time around, we sent emails about a month ago. And we had received two more emails to us that appeared very passive again and not interested in diving deeper into conversations about these issues. However, in one of the recent responses, I believe it was from Chris Howitt, she outlined that the board had the concerns we mentioned in place, and we inquired more about that and did not receive a response back. We do understand that the board is very busy, by the way, especially with reopening schools. We are here today to ask for that information to be presented at a further meeting. This includes data that is publicly accessible and updated about racial disparities based in achievement gap and discipline, how the board is actively being anti-racist and receiving equity training, mental health issues, how are we addressing them among students with professionals and not just school counselors, competent and comprehensive equity and race training for staff and faculty, disciplinary actions for hate speech and symbols by students and staff. So what is outlined in your policy as a hate symbol? How is this discipline being conducted? Is this a restorative justice process? If so, are all disciplinary procedures in a form of restorative justice or just this one? Also, the SRO outreach program. We had reached out. Our organization had created petition for the removal of SROs after seeing the inequitable process conducted by the board to review the program. The process was not centering the voices that are affected by SROs, especially with the inclusion of an officer as a main speaker in the process. We have collected over 260 signatures from Gresham, and I've received comments on the petition as well from current and former members of the district regarding the program and their traumatizing and negative experiences with SROs. We were very saddened to see the continuing lack of response and desire to hear from us or work with us in any capacity from members of the board. It is disheartening to hear words of desire by the board to be anti-racist and inclusive, but then to see our attempts to reach out about those issues be denied repeatedly or passed off. It is very hard to communicate with the board in this restrictive manner with public comment. We hope to explore ways to start these conversations with the board as a whole and to really get some work done on improving the way the district operates and how the systems and policies in place affect students of color. We hope that this community starts to working together on improving the school system for our BIPOC students and vulnerable communities. Thank you for your time, and we hope to connect with you all soon.
Jaia, thanks for joining us and for your engagement at our meetings. Here's that part of the meeting that I can't avoid awkwardness, but we're grateful that you took the time to speak to us today. We have two action items today. For this will conclude the portion of public comments. Again, I encourage folks to read to read what was submitted. We're going to move into our action items in the interest of time and getting through our meeting today. So our first action item is the 2019-20 Conference of Annual Financial Report. Jordan Ely, could you introduce us?
Thank you, Chair Peterson. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. The district's auditors, Polly Rogers and Company PC, have completed the audit of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for 2019-2020. The audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and the general purpose financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2020 adhered to generally accepted accounting principles. It has been the board's practice to take formal action on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by accepting it as presented by the auditors. The board reviewed the 2019-20 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as a first reading at the January 21, 2021 boardwork session. Staff requesting that the board take formal action at this meeting. The business office has submitted the 2019-20 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to the Government Finance Officers Association and to the Association of School Business Officials Excellence in Financial Reporting Programs.
Board, any questions of Jordan?
No, this is Matt. I'll move to accept the 2019-20 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as presented.
A second.
Okay, I wasn't quick enough on the mouse. Director Gomez, was that you on the second?
Yes.
Okay, so moved by Director O'Connell, seconded by Director Gomez to accept the 2019-20 Conference of Annual Financial Report as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? At this time, I want to make note that it appears that, for whatever reason, connectivity or otherwise, we appeared to drop Director Stowers. And so I'm recording five votes in favor, zero against.
She's listening to us through the phone line as a participant.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
She has really bad reception, so she joined through the phone number, and she's an attendee. And she votes yes. She says, I vote yes, thanks.
I'll look at add director's. Through her phone.
Okay, okay.
Sarah, should I have her text you instead of me to record her vote?
I'm seeing it add her back here. I'm seeing it add her back here top through. So allow her to talk, so she should talk if.
Hey.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Yes, I vote yes. I'm sorry. I've been listening. Really bad internet problem today.
I know. I'm grateful that you're joining this way. Okay, so now we have six, six favor, zero against. Okay, so we're going to move. Our next one is the Center for Advanced Learning Cal Charter Renewal, and this has Carla Gay, your name on it.
Thank you, Chair Peterson and the board. The Center for Advanced Learning or CAL is a public charter school that is in the final year of a charter agreement approved in January 2015 by the Gresham Barlow's School District with a one-year extension approved in February 2020. Centennial School District 28J and Reynolds School District 7 are also parties to this charter agreement with the status of cooperating districts. CAL has requested a renewal of the charter agreement, which expires June 30th, 2021. The renewal request includes minor changes to the existing charter agreement. And Steve Day, the CAL director, will share the request with the board and answer any questions. And I don't know, Sarah, if you were able to promote Steve. I did notice he was listening in. So if you can promote him as a speaker, that would be great.
Board, do you have any questions of Carla Gay or Steve Day as he comes online?
Mostly it was just wanting to know where the changes were because I read through the document and I couldn't tell where there were changes.
Yeah, and I'm expecting that's, I believe Steve presented it to the CAL board last week and so he can share with you any proposed changes on the document and he's here. There you are, Steve.
Can help you with that. Hopefully everybody can hear me. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak tonight. I'll be as brief as I can considering the time. So I do have a quick outline of changes that we proposed in this charter renewal and we have run those through the CAL board, which as you all know includes all three superintendents for Gresham Barlow, of course, with Dr. Pereira, and then the superintendents for Centennial and Reynolds School Districts. And the changes are in brief, we've updated the enrollment number. We have, we had, I think, back in 2015, CAL was working with probably three to 400 students. And so I just updated the enrollment to reflect that we are currently fluctuating between about 480 at our low points and about 530 at the high points. And I would say that is just a great reflection, not only of the power of what's happening in CTE education at CAL, but we have two fantastic staff members I'll give a brief shout out to because I know one of them is an attendee tonight, Jessica Gallagher and Chip Conrad are doing work for recruiting and marketing. And in the midst of this pandemic are doing a fantastic job of getting this opportunity in front of students across all three districts. I'm very proud of them. So that was one update. We also updated language in the financial section of the charter renewal and that's simply to reflect that if there are any specialized funds like Measure 98 that they would be shared in the same proportion as we share the ADM in terms of the enrollment dollars that flow toward CAL for their partial attendance of our students. So that was agreed to by the superintendents and by the board and we added that language in there. And then the last one was simply just, I updated the admissions section which had some old language about requiring teachers letter of recommendation and certain GPAs and so on. And we've done away with those several years ago and it really I think had a very open enrollment policy at CAL so we can really make it possible, make it accessible to all of our students. We're excited about that and that change needs to be reflected in the charter. Those are the big three. If there's any questions I can help with tonight?
Any other questions, Board? So thank you for joining us, by the way.
Of course, my pleasure.
I have a couple of questions, comments.
Yep, go ahead.
So I recall, I think back when we had the extension conversation. But one of the things we talked about was who was being invited to come to CAL and were we including all of our students? And I think what we had looked at was the students who weren't being as successful were our students of color. And so I'm not sure this would necessarily be in the charter, but just wanting to make sure that that is being looked at a little bit more as well. And then program wise, when CAL first started, there were certainly programs that were deemed at that time, almost 20 years ago, to be high on the the list, manufacturing, dental health, things like that. So just a quick nutshell, what kind of program changes are we looking at? What kind of offerings are we offering for the kids now? What have we got going on at CAL that we've had wonderful capacity? Because I did notice that number was way up. And so what are we doing with that?
Yep. So advanced manufacturing and dental are still very much, very much alive and a great part of CAL. We have our third floor is our Health Science Program, which is about half of our enrollment and that is very robust. And then on the second floor, we have Digital Media and Design. We have our CIS Cyber Security Program. And then we have two programs that are newest programs, Change Lab, which is the entrepreneurial program and has really taken off over the course of the last three years and enrollment almost doubled in that program. You know, went from a single cohort of students to two cohorts over from from three to just last year, three years ago till last year. And then our newest, very newest program is apparel design, Design the Fab Lab. And that one is like most new programs, it's still in that fledgling stages. We do have a cohort of students as juniors and seniors. And so it's, it's doing well, but it's still got some capacity there.
Thank you.
Of course.
Is Matt have a quick question? Steve, on the number of, I know this is not your annual report, it's probably where we usually get this, but the number of students from the three districts approximately in terms of percentages.
You know, I'm sorry, Matt, I couldn't quite hear in the connection. I'm at home, so I'm not sure if the internet connection was strong enough.
Okay, no problem. I'm just curious on the percentage of students from each of the districts, approximately, ballpark.
Yep. So it's about, let's see if I can do the math in my head real fast. It's about 60% from the three high schools in Gresham Barlow. And then about 20% from Reynolds and 20% from Centennial. And where those percentages fluctuate a little bit or where we bring in students and where their space allows, after those three districts have their first choices. We do bring in about a dozen students per grade level from other schools out of those partner districts.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Okay, we have a recommended motion.
I would move to approve the CAL Public Charter School Renewal from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026 and renewable by the Sponsoring Board of Education by June 30th, 2026.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by Director Howitt, seconded by Director Gomez to approve the CAL Public Charter School Renewal from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2026 and renewable by the Sponsoring Board of Education by June 30, 2026. Any discussion?
I just have one other comment. I just like to remind people that when we first started this over 20 years with the conversation about doing it, they said it wouldn't work and they gave us three years, maybe five tops. And all the barriers along the way of money and partnership and agreement and students. Here we are almost 20 years later and it is a thriving program supporting students who want they graduate with that associate's degree, ready to go to work and ready to further their career. So it has been a great. Kathy Ruth would be very proud of what we've been able to accomplish with this program for students.
Yes, well said.
I would like to add to that, Chris. I've had two of my kids actually go through CAL and it's set them up very well for future. And then my son's fiancee also went through CAL and she was a senior this year at Portland State and she's graduated in a year early because the credits earn CAL. They're lots of money.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? I have just a clarifying question for the contract. What is and renewable by the Sponsoring Board of Education by June 30? That just means that we could be back at the table like we are now to renew it?
Hello, do you want to?
Yeah, I think.
Take a shot at it?
Yeah, Steve, I appreciate that. I was kind of wondering, either Jordan or Carla, if you have any clarifying information from a contract standpoint, just I gather that it just means this is the option afforded to CAL and to us is to sit back at the table and renegotiate or.
Yeah, there's, there's actually, we maybe jumped ahead a little bit because the there, you all voted to renew the charter. This was a request for that. And then in a month, Steve, there's a timeline where Steve can present that what the actual renewal would look like, correct, Steve?
That's right. Yeah, we'll have a review by all three districts, but I guess I understood the vote to be just to accept the renewal application.
Right. Yeah. And then in a month, you will vote again on the actual renewal. And then we will enter into negotiations of the details that have to be finalized within 90 days of that.
Okay.
We may, I noticed, I noticed that we may have asked for the wrong. It's the request was to renew, to approve the request to move forward. And I did not catch that in time. So it's versus the actual renewal itself.
Okay, so I'm just asking from a, I'm asking for the advice of the district then as a, this is a, this is a motion on the table. Can you, is there a risk to us approving this motion as as we've brought it forward? Or a concern that you would have over it?
I don't have a problem. I mean, I think we intend, it sounds to me like we intend to move forward with wanting to renew the charter with CAL. And to Director Howitt's point, that, you know, there, there is a high demand and continues to be a demand for CAL and so I think if that is the intent of the board, then we can move forward and Steve and I can work with our partner districts on the language of the actual contract. You know, the details of the contract and then bring that back to the board. That in typical charter renewals, there's another, there's another window of time where we can kind of talk more deeply if the board wants to contemplate that action. But if the board is ready to move to go ahead and approve the renewal of their charter, then we can move to that and then move into negotiations. Jordan, is that your understanding? Just making sure.
It's obviously a slightly unconventional route with with charter agreements, but I'm hearing the same thing Carla is that the board has an intent to move forward. So I don't, I I'm comfortable with the board moving on this resolution.
Yeah.
Well, I affirm what Matt said and the and Chris, I mean, the partnership is very valuable to us because it's very valuable to our students and families. So I'm, I'm, if there's, if there's no legal or other risk to us jumping on this motion, then that's a solid answer for me. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Steve, thank you for your partnership and for being with us today.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Okay, time has been set aside for board reports and requests. Or for updates from board members. I am going to start with Director Howitt.
Thank you. I just have two things this evening. This weekend is the Oregon School Board Association Spring Meeting for the Board of Directors. We'll be working through some of what's been headed up in the legislative policy area, what's going on with the legislature as well as a couple of new board members that are on the OSBA board. So we'll have some more information about that when when we're finished with that. And then on a somewhat personal note, I had an opportunity to apply for a position on the National School Board Association, got so close, so close. Just didn't quite make it. They said the position was a one-year position. They encouraged me to come back and apply again next year. We'll see, but it was a good interview. I enjoyed the process and opportunity to really look at what's been going on and what I want to improve and what I want to do and serve in the district. So those are my reports for this week, for this month.
All right, thank you. Director O'Connell.
Put me on the spot. I would just like to, actually, really, I just wanted to talk about our meeting last week. I thought it was very refreshing to actually sit down in person and have conversation, although it was well beyond the six feet apart. I thought the discussion level was really high. And so I do look forward to the time that we get back as a collective to make these tough decisions in person. That's all I have. Thank you.
Director Peluso.
Hey, I'm gonna take a pass on this one, my friend.
All right.
Thank you.
Director Stowers.
Yeah, thank you everyone for your patience with me today. I would like to thank everyone who has been sharing their experiences. I know it's very, very difficult distance learning, the pandemic, we are all under a lot of stressors and I just want our community to know that I am listening. I hear you. I'm reading your emails and I thank you for participating and I encourage more engagement.
Okay, Director Gomez.
I want to again thank all of our classified staff and our counselors and our social workers. This is the year where we all had to be become a team and and support our students in every way possible. And I also had the opportunity last month to attend the Student Advisory Committee that Dr. Pereira has in the district. And I very much enjoyed listening to our students, hearing from their voice, from their mouths, their needs and their desires for our district. So I take that to heart. I value student voice. I am here for them. And I want to continue listening to them and I know that we speak as one and like Director Stowers says, we do all read all of the emails. So I don't want our community to think that that we're not reading their emails or that we're not listening to them. And again, I just want to thank our students for for expressing their thoughts and and their their voices with me. Thank you.
This last month has been the most challenging month I've ever served on a board. I want to appreciate my colleagues and district leadership team for hosting three meetings in the month of January and the first of a couple here in February. In the last month, I've spent hours on the phone with other state boards, boards that are outside of our state who are offering in-person instruction, hours on the phone with school administrators and other states in our own that have been able to offer full-time instruction since the fall. Um, within my family, we've well, that's for a separate update. I guess what I want to say is I I do have the confidence that we can do this safely. I think there's, I'm not in a position to dismiss real fear. I think there's, I'm not in a position to dismiss real fear because the thought of losing a loved one or losing being lost to a loved one is the most human fear there is. And I don't want to dismiss that. So I made those calls not to fortify my position. But rather to understand that this can be done because the lives of our staff are very valuable. And so too are the experiences and the lives of our students. I I came away from that conversation and walking through the protocols, the elementary level, believing firmly that we can do this, we can do both, we can have our kids in school and we can provide a safe environment for everybody. And and I myself advice and the advice that I just continually look to is to guard my narratives and to make sure that the narratives that I'm rehearsing are true and lived by me. Because I can't speak for other people's experiences. I can't speak for mine. On that point, I want to emphasize something that has been said to us for two consecutive weeks. Every family has a choice. Every family has the choice of what kind of learning are if we are to enter hybrid learning. Every family has the choice. Nobody is forced to it. As we're able to move into limited in-person instruction, every family has the choice. Nobody is forced into it. And and I'm, I'm very sensitive to the comments in the chat. I want to make sure that we're tracking diagnostic data. And so as far as it's a request for information, I just want to emphasize to the to the district leadership team, what we heard from the survey gathered with a very high response rate was that even our students and families of color, actually, the majority do want to return to school. Those are the voices that we heard in the survey. If there's any reason to believe that that survey is inaccurate as it reflects their voices, I would like to know that. And I'm calling on the community to make sure that if you find yourself representative of those communities, that you make sure that your voice is heard as well. And you can email the board, you can call us. We do want to hear those voices. The ones that we're hearing say they want to be in school.
If you let me address that in Spanish.
See. Por favor.
Where's Eleanor? And para la comunidad latina, la comunidad hispanohablante. hemos estado escuchando muchos comentarios sobre qué es lo que quiere la comunidad latina. Nosotros no queremos hablar por ustedes. Nosotros no somos quien para expresar sus deseos y sus necesidades. Yo como parte de su comunidad, como parte de la comunidad latina les puedo decir que sé lo que es vivir en temor, sé lo que es vivir con necesidad, pero también sé lo que es el sacrificio por, sé la razón por la que vinimos a este país y sé el valor que tenemos para la educación. Les pido que expresen ustedes sus opiniones, sus necesidades. Me pueden escribir en español, yo les contestaré en español. Si le escriben a cualquier persona en la mesa directiva en español, con mucho gusto yo voy a traducir sus mensajes. Yo no quiero que nadie hable por ustedes. Ustedes tienen el poder y tienen la voz para expresar sus necesidades. Ustedes son parte de nuestra comunidad igual de valor, de valorosos que cualquier otra persona en nuestra comunidad. Nuestros niños son parte de este distrito y merecen tener una voz. Por favor, no tengan temor ni pena en expresar sus pensamientos, sus opiniones y sus necesidades. Gracias.
Thank you, Myra. Also, just from our lived experience are, I know that our kindergarteners started the iReady Diagnostic Test and Tim had reported on some of that data. I'm very excited to see what that looks like in March and what the experiences what the successes of CDL and what the challenges have been as it relates to real numbers coming hopefully this next month. So that that's my update. Thank you for staying with me. This time we move forward into informational items. We have a financial report as of December 31st, 2020. Jordan Ely, can you walk us through that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The district's overall position as reported in the December 31 report has improved since the December, since the November 30th reporting period. This is partly due to favorable conditions and partly due to a change in spending patterns that we're now anticipating will come to bear in the next fiscal year. This summary will address the former first and then the latter. Local revenue projections have improved slightly. It's very slight. The outlook change is not significant, but it is positive. The significant outlook change that has occurred on some of our expenditure line items, including subs and temp salaries, purchase services and the collective lines representing salaries and benefits. These line items represent more than $4.1 million in underrun against the budget. At this point, I should stop and and say these are projections. So our projection is 4.1 million under the budget. But these projection projected savings are partially offset by the anticipated excess resources needed for charter schools. The projected revenue shortage also offsets some of these anticipated savings. Regarding spending pattern changes, curriculum and technology represent two large categories in which we expect to experience budget underruns. The causes of these savings are not because the need went away, but because our current operating conditions have shifted the planned expenditures to the next fiscal year. For technology, the planned device replacement cycle was interrupted by the need to focus on expanding to one-to-one student devices. We have several staff and student devices scheduled for replacement this year, but will likely not be replaced until next year. At that time, we will still need to replace devices scheduled for replacement in both years. And we will also have the added responsibility of servicing more devices than planned due to one-to-one. Expansion and maintenance of infrastructure and technology department staffing will be needed to support these increased technology demands. COVID-19 turned our five-year one-to-one technology plan into a one-year plan. While federal funds allowed us to make the expansion happen, we now need to maintain it. The expedited shift to one-to-one also means that our curriculum plans must change. While staff has worked diligently to continue curriculum adoption efforts this year, there are some funds that may go unspent this year and will be needed next year. Curriculum and technology are two critical tools we provide to our educators and specialists to deliver on our core mission of inspiring and empowering each student. With that in mind, beginning with the 2021-22 budget, the Board and Budget Committee should expect to see requests from staff to establish subfunds dedicated to these two components of our operation with annual transfers to ensure the needs of our staff and students are sustainably met. Due to, due to the conditions described in this report, staff are now projecting an ending fund balance of nearly 17.3 million for this fiscal year. The composition of our instructional delivery model for the remainder of this year will likely impact this projection. Thank you.
Any, any questions of Jordan?
Has there been much conversation yet about potential drop off in the next couple of years, mostly because there hasn't been as much with the corporate tax and other funding that the state has not received during the pandemic slowdown?
Yeah, there, there is some talk, although nothing official, the the legislature and the governor have seemed to express support for continuing education funding at the current service level. And the corporate activity tax came in better than or has been coming in better than expected in initial economic forecasts. So we do expect some funding for the student investment account. Most of the reductions to to that supplemental funding because of reduced revenue has not been focused on the student investment account, which is the part that goes directly to K-12 schools. So, so we do expect to see SIA dollars next year. The governor's proposed budget calls for full funding of Measure 98 as well. And a current service level budget for the general fund, the state school fund. There is disagreement between the Legislative Fiscal Office and the association I belong to, which is the Oregon Association of School Business Officials about what a current service level number looks like. We have expressed those concerns to the legislature and to the Legislative Fiscal Office. We feel like we've identified the root cause of the discrepancy, which is per-stud debt service for side accounts that districts hold. If you add up the debt service that is due over the next biennium at all districts, it almost exactly matches the difference between the LFO and what OASBO is what we call our organization is calculating for current service level. So we are trying to sort that out. But overall, we feel that we've heard support from the legislature about not balancing the budget with education reductions. So for right now, we're expecting to see the governor's budget until we hear something differently, although we're very early on in that process. So, you know, stay tuned through the spring.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you for bringing this to us. All right, for announcements, board recognizing the upcoming potential limited in-person instruction phase in that our district leadership team will be planning and executing. I, I am still verifying it and will this coming week. Both Director Gomez and I have talked about postponing our strategic planning meeting that was scheduled for February 19th into the month of March to a date to be determined. What that means, however, is that we would like to have a work session for February 18th. That's not confirmed. I'm asking you to reserve that Thursday night for a work session. And and I'll try to get that answer as quickly as possible for those who have to take time off work, etc., for that 19 strategic planning meeting. I anticipate that we'll move it to to March, but I want to talk that through with the district leadership team to make sure that the space I think that we're offering them in order to do that is actually going to happen. So so keep that in mind. Currently, however, we do have a February 19th, 2021 scheduled board strategic planning session. We try to conduct those in person and so that location would be determined. Following that, we have a March 4th board work session followed by a regular board meeting. Currently, those are anticipated to be online. With that, there being no other business for the board, we're adjourned.
Like, like, I, I just clarification because I'm not understanding what you're saying. You're saying you just want to move it or we're going to do something else on February 18th or 19th?
Yes. If we don't have a strategic planning meeting, we're going to have a work session on the 18th. To make sure that we're yes, just a, just a regular, I guess it'll probably be called a special work session because it wasn't on our original calendar, but yes, a typical board work session. I will get that answer. We have a meeting. I'll meet with the district leadership team on the 11th, the afternoon of the 11th, and I'll get a response to the board quickly and Sarah will get it publicly posted if we make a change. Yeah, thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.